She's not whacking on ya.
She's a new note taker. Oh, you look some good.
Where else would I rather be, right?
Right. Are your keyboard skills good? You know shorthand?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's how we do it.
They can't see your face at the stage.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is fine.
This is fine.
It's good to meet you.
It's great to meet you.
It's nice to meet you.
It's nice to meet you.
So, we're going to talk to you.
We're discussing your problems.
Not just the government.
What nine...
Oh, I said, please, we're going to talk about this.
We've got like a couple of...
Well, we're kind of talking about this.
Oh.
So...
Well, you're going to try and...
I'm...
I'm...
I did agree that I was...
I'm...
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 Yeah.
I'm...
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 Um...
I'm...
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 Carrie, there's more in there.
Thank you.
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 You too.
What, what's her issue?
Oh, I'm just asking her.
No.
How Stan is doing.
Yeah, how is she doing, Stan?
The board will come down. Okay, let's get going.
No.
They don't have...
Can't give us much attention.
They're just...
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 Morning, everybody. We're gonna go get started on our presentation of Employee Years of Service Awards. So, we'll start...
Why don't we come down here?
Yeah, why don't you...
Let's go down. 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 So, thank you all for being here. Appreciate all the cumulative years of service, and there are a lot. And I just want to start out with thanking you and for all, again, for all the work that you do. The unsung heroes and the... I always say I've lived in eight counties through being here in Oregon. And even before I came here, I just think, wow, somebody picks up the phone and they actually follow the drill. And we hear that all the time from people who say, your people are amazing, and it is true. So, we want to thank you again. At the end of the ceremony, after everyone's been recognized, the awards, all the sweat will be distributed in the hallway. So, we'll start with Commissioner Primusit, who is going to acknowledge the five-year awards.
Okay. I'm gonna put these on so hopefully I will not butcher your names too badly. I did practice, I promise. And of course, it starts off with the admin office, and we've got Kathy Ariola. Okay? All right, Kathy. Norma, there they are. We're gonna hold the applause till he ends, I'm sorry.
That was for me getting my name right. Norma Heath from accounting.
For five years?
That's... You're on my list here, Norma.
Well, that's a wrong list.
Good sense of humor, sir.
You're gonna get recognized twice now.
Oh, am I gonna get recognized twice?
No, you're further down.
So, I'm fifteen years, but I've actually been here for thirty.
Boy, you must be talking different.
But I just want to make sure that it's...
I didn't do what they tell me.
Yeah. Sorry.
Okay, Carolina Rook, are you gonna...
I understand what you mean by object.
That's from admin. Now, we go to the assessor's office, and we've got Melissa Aker and Carrie Warden. We've got community justice, Jason DeForest, Dwight Demmon, Marcus Creed, Becky Newman, Priscilla Ramirez. County council, Todd Saddle.
Oh.
Oh. Yeah, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
Isn't it?
Oh, he's out there.
Is he?
Remember that there is a large contingent of people out in the hall that can't be down here.
He should have them in, that was against the law.
Here's Todd, everybody.
You've just been recognized, Todd.
Here's Todd.
Thank you. Woo!
From the district attorney's office, we have Brittany Marlowe and Holly Winter.
They're all head actors.
From AKHS, we have, wow, Tabitha Alveder, Olga Paola Anderson, Bethany Ball, Sue Brandt, Arlene Bryant.
Thank you. Now, everybody can hear me make a mistake. Arlene Bryant, Zenadore Di, Fabioli, Fabiola, Juarez Elias, Carolyn Graham, Lance Hancock, Sylvia Hansen, Melissa Lemke, Paul Martinez, Stephanie Odobasik, Monica Rodke, Patricia Simuli, Simuler, I'm sorry, and Nancy Nguyen. That's all from HHS.
Public Works, we have James Craver. Sheriff's office, we have Jacob Herr, Jacob Rex, Nathan Geyer, and Kevin Thurman. Now, it says group applause. I just want to say thank you very, very much. Five years indicates that you're serious about being with us. This isn't an interim job, and I'll tell you, the people, the people who work for Yamhill County, as I've been the commissioner here in these last four years, I can tell you, they're the greatest people in the world, and I just have so appreciated the ability to be with each and every one of you, not on a day-in and day-out basis, but I've watched the things that you've been able to accomplish for the people of this county, and we are very blessed to have you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. You know, I'll move on, and I have first the ten-year awardees, and I'll ask you to stand and stay standing until we get through that group applause. So, from the assessor's office, we have, I won't say Jeffrey, Jeff Ivy, Jeff, you stand up, please. So, from the Assessor's Office, we have, I won't say Jeffrey, Jeff Ivy, Jeff, you stand up, please. From the Community Justice, we have Katie Foster. DA's Office, Sarah Grabner-Nor. HHS, Reed Hedlund, Robert Morris, Catherine Yonker. From Public Works, we have John Phelan. Of course, we all know, he's probably not here today. He's still recovering from his terrible accident we had. So, we all wish John the best in his future recovery. And Stephen Sims. And then, from the Sheriff's Office, we have Carrie Lars, Lures, Tina McNeil, and Donald Stackpole II. So, if you can all stand up, and let's hear a big applause for all those people. And you want to make sure you applause for especially the Sheriff's Department, because if you don't, you never can tell what kind of car you'll see behind you, so. Then, I'll move on to the fifteen-year, those were the ten-year. I'll move on to the fifteen-year awardees. From Administration, we have Norma Accounting, Norma Heath. Well, Norma, five years and fifteen years. We're not quite up to thirty years yet, but we'll get there. Community Justice, Eric Imlaw. The DA's Office, Sel Miller. Health and Human Services, Pamela Judd, Matthew Lee. Public Works, we have John Reed. Sheriff's Office, we have Steve Reed and Karen Rogers. So, if I can get you all to stand up, even those in the house, stand up. Thank you. You know, and now I get to go to the twenty-year ones, which is a real honor to me, because I figure only as a second-year or third-year Commissioner come January. I'd like to say that I won't probably be around for when our ten-year ones get their twenty-year or thirty-year award. But I hope I'm at least standing on earth, but I probably won't be here. But anyway, our twenty-year awardees, and if you think, twenty years with the same organization. If you look at now, the Millennials and the Z-Gens, or whatever they want to call them, that turn over two or three jobs a year, and we have people that have been here fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. It's just really amazing, so. But we won't talk about the baby boomers. But anyway, the twenty-year awards from Administration and Facilities, we have Joe Moore. Joe, put up your hand. From the Clerk's Office, Anita Mills. From Community Justice, we have Lisa Haynes, Ronald Jones, Amy Kemper, Betty Spencer, Lori Taylor. Twenty years from the DA's Office, we have Carla Connors. Yay, Carla. From Health and Human Services, we have Christine Emingham, Julio Matamala Ost. I hope I got that right and didn't butcher it too bad. Somebody told me that's the way it was. But Julio, good job. And we have Carrie Spray. And then, from the Sheriff's Department, we have Darren Boom and Christopher Ray. So, let's give them all a great round of applause. You know, as a only second-year Commissioner, or third-year Commissioner going on that has about thirty-five years in community service, I couldn't be prouder to have worked with as a... Oh, thank you, David. The radio guy says pull it down, so I will. But I couldn't be more prouder than to work with such a fine group of individual employees, because you know, it's not the Commissioners that make the county go. It's not Administration by itself that makes the county go. It's everybody that's out in front of us and all of our employees that really make the county what it is and give us the reputation. So, I'd like to thank you all. And with that said, I'll turn it over to our Chair this year, Mary Starrett.
Thank you. So, these are the Silver Anniversary, twenty-five-year awardees. And if you could stand up so we can all see you. And if you're out in the hall, if you'd come on in. From the DA's Office, Mr. Bradbury, sorry, doesn't like to be called Mr. Berry. Bradbury. From Public Works, Francisco Ramirez. From HHS, Julie Goodwin. And the thirty-year awardee is Ken Friday. Is Ken here? Ken Friday from Planning. He's not here? He's probably planning. Across the street. Planning to be here. The thirty-five-year awardee, wow, Marie McDaniel Belisario. There's a backbone right there. Thank you. Appreciate all your work. And we have the following retirements. Norma, are you, is there something, are you retiring, or are you good on the years? Are you good? Twenty-nine years, Diane Fisher from Planning, retiring. Dorothy Green, twenty-eight years from HHS Community Support Services. Laura Schabold, our Administrator, twenty-four years, retiring the end of the month. Roma First, twenty-three years, HHS DD and Veterans. Did I say that right? Randy Satell, twenty years, Community Justice. William Hall, eighteen years, HHS Adult Behavioral Health. Sherry Matheson, eighteen years, Planning. Becky Weaver, eleven years, Administration and Accounting. Grant Thompson, seven years, Planning. And Krista Brandenburg, four years, HHS Adult Behavioral Health. So, thank you all for all that you've done and for all you continue to do. And it's just a real blessing to have such quality people on our team. So, thank you again, and all your swags out in the hall. So, have a great day, and thank you all for being here. Appreciate it.
Mary, before she came over, what department did she work in?
HHS.
HHS?
And Norma worked in Clerk's Office for part-time.
Yeah, I knew Norma. What did Caroline do in HHS? She's, she's, she liked her, she's good. They're both so good. They're both so good. And they have to put up with us, too.
Yeah.
What more can you say?
Keep track of us.
That's right. What more can you say?
That's not easy.
No.
All right, well, I guess we need to get going. Oh, where is?
I'm glad we moved there, because Senate agenda, so maybe it'll be a short meeting.
Yeah, I've got a meeting that starts at ten-thirty at Family and Youth, and I never get to it. So, hopefully today I can. December thirty-third, official, at the end of December.
Yeah, I want to make sure it gets right there on the phone, Norma. I can't. But it's really, it's really interesting. I look at, I look at those two girls, and I wonder how do they ever get done what they get done? Carrie and Carolina? It's like, how do they ever get done what they get done? And do all that extra stuff, too.
Yeah, no, they don't, they don't stop. Oh, Sean's here, okay.
Last year, didn't our list last year for the boys, didn't they have like five, ten, and fifty-nine years? Didn't they do like retirees, didn't they have a number of years on there? It seems like last year when we did, we were able to add up the total number, the total number of years.
You mean the retirees?
No, every, everybody, like, how many fifteen-year, what did that total? How many five-years, what did that total?
I don't remember.
But it's some ungodly number, some ungodly number.
It's a lot. All right, I guess we can, I guess we can get going.
That's too bad about Janice, that's just.
Yeah, they can't get a handle on that.
Especially when she's been through all this.
I know. Stan, do you have an invocation?
Yes.
Oh, you do? Wonderful.
Sean.
Sean's here?
Yeah.
Sean's gonna do your invocation. Oh, Sean, there are two Shans here today. Did you know that?
Oh, I know that, yeah.
Two Shans, all right.
Oh, the Sean, the COG, the COG Sean's here. Hi, Sean.
How are you doing, sir?
Good.
Got awful quiet in here.
It did.
Yeah, Sean's been practicing, he's had a thirty-minute invocation.